All right, good evening. I'd like to call the July 2nd Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Place your hand over your heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you ready to take roll?
Commissioner Chaco?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Commissioner Reese?
Here.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Here.
And Chair Hamilton, or Vice Chair Hamilton.
Present. All right, I'd like to move to item 3A, the oath of office for a new commissioner, Jacob Wasserman.
Okay, I'll be administering the oath of office, so if you could raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Jacob L. Wasserman.
I, Jacob L. Wasserman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Planning Commission.
The duties of the Planning Commission.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We can move on to item 3B, which is the election of officers. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to nominate Josh Hamilton as Chair and Pierre Chaco as Vice Chair for 2025-26.
Second.
Can we do that by acclamation?
We can. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, all right. We have our new Chair and Vice Chair, and then you can do your seat switching.
Can we do our seat switching?
Well.
Okay. Or we could just keep it where we are right now. It was easier with the name blocks.
The ceremonial changes of the name blocks.
We'll get you next time.
Okay, we're ready for the item number four, the Planning Director's Report.
Ethan will, yeah.
Hi, everybody. Roxanne Tanamori, Deputy Director, happy to be here with you this evening. We have a lot to catch up on in terms of updates. Let's first just go ahead and start with our upcoming Planning Commission meetings. We see that we won't be meeting again likely until August 20th. We'll keep you posted if something does change. Based on the way our long-range agenda is shaping up, we'll have a little bit of a break. So August 20th, you can see on the screen that we do have a tentative for a text amendment to allow alcohol at 2001 Wilshire. And in terms of ARB, we have a full agenda coming up. On July 21st, we have a series of housing projects. So that is a busy and an important agenda. Happy to see those projects moving forward. We also have Landmarks Commission coming up on July 14. There's a Structure of Merit application at 1125 18th Street. That is a residential structure that's currently listed on the HRI. And then we also have our annual Mills Act contract monitoring update, as well as new contracts going forward in August to the Commission. In terms of City Council, we had an important meeting on June 24th, which was the adoption of the two-year fiscal, or the two fiscal year budget. That was passed after a fair amount of discussion in the preceding meetings to talk about council priorities and where they did want some adjustments made. That particular item did include some minor adjustments on the dais to address the need around public safety for a community service officer and one additional lieutenant. There is going to be more information presented about the budget, likely in one of our other items that I'll be updating you on, which is the State of the City. Also coming up on July 8th is an important meeting around the airport conversion project. The City Council will be looking at an informational presentation from staff around the three scenarios that were put out for public input and comment. There will be a large body of information around what the community feedback was on those, not only on which was a preferred, not just one of the three options, but which components of each of the three scenarios got the most pin drops and the other survey tools that were utilized. So that's going to be a good, a good meeting and a good discussion. The Council did not want to have a lot of other items on that meeting to give ample time for the discussion. July 29th, you just heard about the RAND DA Amendment Proposal at your last meeting. That's going forward, as well as an extension of an ADU ordinance for compliance with state law. And then finally, some other updates, just on a larger note. Our City Council, or excuse me, our new City Manager, Oliver Cheek, he will be starting on July 14th, so we are excited to welcome him to Santa Monica. We are also hosting a Palisades Malibu Business Resource Fair on July 9th. That'll be at the Main Library from 4 to 6 p.m. We'll be offering information about temporary relocations, limited-term workspaces, that kind of information for folks who would like to relocate to the Palisades, or from the Palisades while the rebuild effort is underway. We are also going to be hosting a new format for the State of the City. That's going to be on July 17th. That's going to be hosted at Reed Park from 4 to 7 p.m. Again, a new format for State of the City. There's going to be a reception in Miles Playhouse. There will be food. There will also be city and partner organization booths with activities for kids and for folks of all ages. It's also a kickoff to celebrate the community's 150th anniversary celebration. So that'll be a great event in a new format and a new location, so hope to see folks there. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Landris?
Thank you, Roxanne. Could we potentially agendize the housing package that just went through the legislature and takes effect today or yesterday? I know it's all of what you're reading all night long, trying to figure out how it impacts Santa Monica, but I think the sooner we can explain why we've just been put out of business and everything will be coming across your desk for administrative approval, it'd just be great to understand the contours of that. My other question, I'll just ask them both at once. In the spirit of us being the infrastructure people, which includes, to a certain extent, the travel of vehicles around Santa Monica, parking meters have gone in in a variety of places, which is great. But I have heard from the community that the time of the parking, like the limit, is not great. A two-hours, a two-hour segment along Ocean Park between about 18, excuse me, 17th and 16th, I want to say, used to be two-hour parking, and the meters that went in are now one hour, which is causing problems for people with appointments that last longer than an hour, for which they can't come out to add money to the meter. So I'm just wondering how that was arrived at and if it's possible to get a second look at that sooner rather than later? And to make sure that as meters are going in, and I understand that that's council direction for this year's budget, that they are actually responsive to the nature of the businesses that those meters are ultimately serving? Because I think in this case, people are going to Pilates sessions, they're going to lunch meetings, they're going to other kinds of appointments where they can't just sort of duck out and put money in the meter.
Thank you for both of those requests. As you know, we are reviewing furiously the new, the new language that's been adopted, and we anticipate that there will be interest from the community, the Council, this Commission, and others. I will defer to our planning team, but we will be preparing information that perhaps explains the arc of the changes and what that would mean in some plain language for folks. And in terms of the parking meters and the changes to the hour limitations, we will certainly raise the point to our colleagues in DOT and see if we can either bring some information to you sooner rather than later, or if there's something that they can provide that explains the rationale for the changes and how they're making those decisions.
Commissioner Fresco, did you have a question? Okay, well, we'll get to that in just one second. Any other questions? I have, I have a question just about the, I know we have, there's a, there's a dashboard that the planning group has put together that lists the projects that have applied for entitlements and have been entitled. Is there, can we get an update on where that stands? Because so many housing projects obviously don't come to us. And I'm just, would like to know kind of where, where we're at in terms of number of projects and number of new units that are, have been proposed.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be happy to send a link out to the Commission after the, the meeting, and then we can help you decipher. It's a very visual, easy-to-use dashboard. We update it, we try to do it probably quarterly. It was last updated beginning of May.
Okay.
For the purposes of that, because it's, to be, it's, just so you know, it's manual. You know, so, but we do, we did it for May because we just did our annual report to HCD.
That would be helpful.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick follow-up to that? As you were asking it, I'm really, I'm curious, as we head into sort of a year, so I'm asking this in advance, from the fires, sometimes discussions here have turned on occupancy rates, rental occupancy rates, as projects are developed. And to the extent that we are start, we are able to capture data about post-fire occupancy or whenever that might be possible to capture, it'd just be really interesting. I don't think it needs a long conversation, but it could be useful for us to understand alongside the development pipeline. Yeah, and I hear, I mean, like, it's a positive question in the sense that I hear that a lot of the, a lot of the projects that were taking a minute to fill, filled, and they're filling with families and they're filming, filling with, and they're bringing some of these streets to life in the way that we forecasted.
We'll see what's available out there to provide a data point if it's available, yeah.
Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Planning Commissioner Announcements. Commissioner Fresco?
Well, first I want to welcome our new commissioners. I'm glad you're here. And I also wanted to let you all know that July 10th is the actual 150th birthday of our fair city. The map was recorded at 10:10 a.m., so you can have a moment of joy at that moment, on that day, which is a week from tomorrow. So I just wanted to make sure every, I tell people that's the birthday every year, but this year it was especially important and exciting. That date you hear about, July 15th, that was the day they started selling lots. Obviously, they had to record a map before they could sell lots. So if anybody tells you it was founded on July 15th, you can feel free to correct them. So, happy birthday, Santa Monica.
That's our sesquicentennial, right? Okay, any other announcements? Commissioner Wasserman?
Just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Jacob. I live in Wilmont with my wife and two young kids. Today was actually my first day on parental leave. My son was less happy to be with me than his mom. My day job is, I'm a transportation planning researcher at UCLA. We have a think tank there, study transportation issues. My email is, new email is jacob.wasserman@santamonica.gov. Feel free to reach out anytime. Happy to chat, grab coffee, talk about issues.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to public input. This is for items that are not on the agenda. Have we received any requests? Okay. Commissioner Landris?
I have a question, well, for, for our consent calendar, I have a question.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Yeah, let's move on.
I'm wondering, in view of the really limited wiggle room, I mean, I read this resolution, number 25013, and I'm trying, like, there wouldn't, there, even if I'd wanted to, there weren't words to change. I'm wondering if we can put 11A onto the consent calendar, or if we actually have to hold a public hearing?
I think procedurally, we would recommend that you hold the hearing.
Okay.
Because you have to make a recommendation to the Council.
Okay.
All right. Oh, yeah, and of course, you could waive the staff report for 11-ish, should you wish to that at that time.
Okay. Are there any commissioners who want to pull any items from the consent calendar?
I would like to pull 7B.
Okay.
I'll be annoying on my first day and pull 7A because I wasn't there for the meeting. Yeah, to abstain.
Abstain, I don't think we need to pull that from the consent?
Okay.
Okay. Are we pulling it or no?
However, I can best abstain.
Our practice is, I mean, you can tell him this, but generally, if you're absent, what we're told is that we're voting on our faith in our staff in the accurate portrayal of the meeting, so it doesn't actually matter if you were there.
In that case, never mind.
Just to clarify, Deputy City Attorney Michelle Hughard, it's a vote of confidence that the meetings were transcribed properly.
Okay. So we're going to pull item 7B from the consent calendar?
I'll move 7A.
Second.
All is in favor? 7A.
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Okay.
Okay, do we have any ex parte communications for item 7B?
Do we, do we need the staff report, or just timing-wise?
It's not critical for me, I do have a few questions.
I do too, but I don't need the staff report. Could I, I'll move to waive the staff report, so that we can go straight to questions?
Do we have any, okay.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor of waiving the staff report for 7B? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, okay.
Do we take public comments now, if there are, if there are any?
If you have questions of staff, you can have that, and then you can then move on to public comment. Yep.
Right, yeah. Okay. Question time. Question time. Any questions from the Commission? Commissioner Chaco?
Thank you. Based on one of the letters that we received from the public, I had a question to staff regarding past experience with limitations on the CUP for single-serve alcohol and the ease of enforcement of those provisions.
Your, your question is about the, the ease of enforcement of single-serve alcohol?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, you know, practically speaking, it's, obviously, our enforcement system is complaint-based. You know, we don't have the resources to do kind of proactive or to be everywhere at every time. You know, so from that, you know, perspective, obviously, the, you know, the city would respond to any complaints around that. I would say, you know, we, I don't think we've come across, I guess, that issue, to our knowledge, you know, in terms of enforcement of those kinds of particular conditions. But I, I would say practically speaking, it probably would be a challenge to enforce, you know, consistently, just because of the nature, you know, and the ability of, just the availability of enforcement resources.
Commissioner Fresco?
Even though I didn't, wasn't going to pull it from the consent calendar, I did look at other CUPs that we've granted over the many, many years I've sat here. And I noted there were two conditions that often, or one in particular, that often repeats itself, which is that at the end of the business day, the employees of the convenience store would walk a radius and make sure there wasn't trash. And I didn't see that condition in this, and I was wondering why that was. Oh, it is in here? I just missed it. I'm sorry. And the other question, I noted that most of them, they say that they can't sell alcohol after 11 p.m., and this one goes until 12. So is there a reason for that? Or did I misread that one too?
Oh, there we go. So the daily operational hours of the convenience market are 6 a.m. to midnight? And so we felt that the sales could occur during the regular operational hours.
Okay, so, okay. Thank you.
So we had an exchange briefly about the sale of alcohol at gas stations in Santa Monica, and I want to kind of put that on the record in the sense that it seems that there are other gas stations where there are off-site sales with no restrictions. I believe you had mentioned Cloverfield as one of them, and then I don't remember the other one, but it was...
So, yeah, it's the Chevron at 1812 Cloverfield and the Arco at 332 Pico Boulevard.
At 332 Pico. So so if we look at the Arco, that's actually essentially a precedent for not limiting this in the area around schools, because that's within easily 500 feet of Santa Monica High School. So I'm, you know, we got some correspondents expressing concern about the proximity of, of SMC, and I would note the proximity of John Adams and Will Rogers. And it's not clear to me that there is any precedent for us placing additional restrictions on these off-site sales, given the history of the CUPs in other locations. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think to put a finer point on it, you know, where we allow off-site sales, and, you know, I would be cautious about regulating just particularly on like one land use, because we have, you know, 7-11s, we have CVSs, you can buy alcohol at grocery stores, right? You can buy it in a lot of places that are all over the city. And, you know, so I think if there was an interest in especially restricting alcohol sales associated with gas stations around schools, especially when we already have existing places, you know, we would really need to establish, you know, the rational basis for treating one individual land use so differently, when you have alcohol sales associated with many, many other land uses in the city.
No, I, I get that. I also, I'm assuming that the same applies to the question of alcohol sales at gas stations, given our interest in trying to prevent impaired driving, but there is, I mean, I'm assuming that if that data were there, we would have banned, we would have banned alcohol sales at gas stations nationwide or statewide.
And I mean, you can, you can drive to your grocery store and purchase alcohol, you know, it's the same, it's not dissimilar in that regard. And every, every alcohol application that we get, we run through the police department for their questions, comments, concerns, you know, and they did not express concern with the, this, this particular permit at this location.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Any further questions?
I do have a follow-up. Just to dig a little deeper on the advent of the Santa Monica College facility opposite the, the street from this proposed use. I think I'm picking up from the previous response that we have not, in any other instance, where such a use has been proposed directly or very close to a school, we've not typically introduced different conditions from what we have proposed today. Is that, do I understand that right?
No, we haven't, I think, introduced, you know, anything particular, just because of proximity, you know, to, to a school. And we're certainly happy to walk through, you know, some of the operational conditions, just highlighting some of the key ones, if you'd like, if you'd be interested in hearing that. I think Jesse's prepared to do that, yeah.
Well, as a sort of a related question, then, it would seem that rather than requiring a CUP in such instances, it might make sense just to have a standard limitation on the use, rather than actually having a public hearing each time and raising the expectation that there might be something different. Is that something that's been considered before?
Absolutely. You know, that's probably a different topic altogether, you know, that we can certainly agendize and discuss another time. But generally speaking, you know, we do have streamlined alcohol, you know, permits for different kinds of uses, especially in the downtime where there's been a hyper-focus on economic recovery. That kind of a streamlined permit exists for like restaurants throughout the city, you know, because it's generally incidental. You know, so to kind of eliminate the CUP for the standalone off-site or off-sale uses, you know, would be a policy shift. But like I said, if there was interest, we could certainly agendize and discuss that at a different meeting.
So my last question, and I think it's in, as a follow-up to a response I received from staff, the, there's a provision in the code for a compliance report to be done on a particular use after a specified period of time. Could you speak on that having been, whether or not it's been used recently in a similar situation? Just to provide some additional guidance.
Yeah, it, it has been. I'm just remembering, it may, it was imposed, I think, on a, it was a convenience store. I can just think of like two or three. This is in the last five years. It's not super, super frequent. I think we have, like, it's been used for some daycare centers. You can remember a more recent one, yeah. Or do you want to speak to it?
I'm just thinking about your question, and we have required, you know, periodic reporting, and I can think of one for a restaurant with alcohol. And there were a variety of concerns that had been raised by the neighborhood, and so that was considered by this Commission. The, and the reporting requirement was imposed, and we do get those reports, and I reviewed one recently. And it also provides the, the vehicle for if there's any concerns, you know, the community knows, that they can provide that to the operator, and then also through that reporting, we will have a chance to review it as well.
So there, the, the code section, you know, that kind of like speaks to this is 941080B, and that's essentially associated with the conditional use permit part of the zoning ordinance. So it contemplates this, you know, where in response to issues or concerns raised from the community or just, you know, concerns from the Commission itself, you do have the ability to, you know, kind of ask for, you know, I'm just making it up, like, you know, after a year of operations, right, a report back to the Commission on, you know, were there any code enforcement complaints received? You know, any, you know, police, you know, calls for service, essentially, you know, for many of the city's agencies with regards to this, just to understand, you know, whether the allowance of alcohol, you know, influenced that. And it's not that it would be a means to say like, okay, this stops, right? Because the conditional use permit runs with the land. What it does allow is the imposition of potentially additional operating conditions to mitigate those, those... What it does allow is the imposition of potentially additional operating conditions to mitigate those, those issues.
Right, and as a follow-up, I was going to ask if in the past situations where we have required a compliance report, has it resulted in changes in conditions? Or is it typically just causes better behavior as a result of the conditions?
Yeah, I haven't, I mean, ever, so ever since this particular provision was included in the code and that we've, we've, I would say sparingly added it as, as a condition in some conditional use permits, I can't think of an instance where we've had to bring something back to the commission for additional conditions to be added on.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions, do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Jennifer Oden, on behalf of the applicant, I'll be brief, and I can answer any questions, certainly. I think I can hit on maybe some of the commentary and questions that came up. But as you know, I'm representing the applicant. The applicant has been here at this location since 1985, is the landowner. Business owner and operator since the early 1990s, when it took over the gas station service station, converted service bays into the convenience store that we now see today as the Chevron Extra Mile, and takes this application very seriously with respect to the off-site sale of beer and wine, and is a responsible, existing responsible California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control licensee at other locations, other gas station for off-site and actually onsite locations as well. So certainly familiar with all of the rules, laws, regulations regarding the off-site sale of alcoholic beverages, in this case, beer and wine. To answer your question, Commissioner, there's not an intent to sell singles at the location. For beer, the intent is to sell three-packs, six-pack, 12-packs, your multi-pack for beer, because really it is a 2,100 square foot convenience store and wants to serve the neighborhood with respect to coming in, grabbing a few items, and that ancillary beer or wine with those few items. It's only four cooler doors, roughly about 70 linear feet allocated, so it is a very ancillary use to the food mart. Pretty commonplace with respect to convenience stores, gas stations in this day and age, in the, in the state of California, and one that customers generally expect and request to see. And that's why Mr. Masachi and his brother, Mr. Masachi, brought this application is, is really in a result of the customer base that they have and that they want to continue to serve and better serve. So we're available for any questions. There's also two members of the public that are here in support, business owners across the street from the mechanic shop and from the tire shop, if you wanted to hear support. But overwhelmingly, it's been supportive, non-opposition from the law enforcement, and it's, as we all know, very heavily regulated, of course, with the, with respect to the conditional use permit, and also by the state, ABC, right? An ABC license has to be applied for and approved, and consideration factors including but not limited to schools nearby will be considered by the state, ABC. So we look forward to the opportunity, and we respectfully request that you approve the conditional use permit, and we can answer any questions.
So the applicant has other stores like this that do sell alcohol?
Correct.
Okay, in the Los Angeles area?
Correct, in the greater Los Angeles area.
Okay. Have there been any complaints raised or any actions brought against those other locations?
No, no. I have the applicant Albert Masachi here, an officer-director and shareholder of the, the corporate entity, Masco Investments, Inc., and no revocations of those like ABC licenses, no suspensions, up to date on their responsible beverage service and training, and good, good business stewards in the communities, as far as I understand it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions of the applicant? We have no public comment?
Actually, I have, I do have one quick question. I'm not sure I, I heard correctly, but could you repeat how long the present business has been in operation, the convenience store?
Sure, it's been, it's, to my knowledge, it's been a gas station since 1965. My client purchased the location in 1985, roughly. There was a tenant that was operating, purchased the land. There was a tenant that was operating it, closed for a period of time. In the early 1990s, 1994, there was some remodel, reopening of the gas station that took place. There was a CUP at that time. And then in 2004, there was a CUP for the conversion of the auto-service bays into what we now see fully the convenience store food mart, no longer having any service bays at the location.
So since 2004, it's been a convenience store?
Correct.
Under the current ownership?
Under the current, and, and the current ownership actually since land ownership since 1985, and operate, business operational since the early 1990s.
I see. So one last question regarding the timing is, since it's been operating as a convenience store, the timing of this CUP for alcohol sales, is it by any chance part of the consideration, the new development across the street?
No, not at all. Actually, it's been something that was contemplated in years past. There are other, as I mentioned, other ABC licensed locations, gas stations that the Masachi brothers own and operate. It's a common request from the patrons that come in, and has become something, you know, in our consumer-driven world, I guess, that, that is expected at these, at these locations. And it's really just to better serve the existing clientele and future clientele, and that was the, the reasoning behind it.
Your mic is on. Do you, do you have a question?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, well, I think that if there are no further questions, and I think we've had a good discussion, do we want to move to a vote? Do we have public comments?
Do we have any?
I don't think so, yeah.
Want to mention that we didn't, thanks.
I think we can move to a vote. We'll, we'll close the public hearing and move to a vote.
Second.
Commissioner Chaco?
Aye.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
And Chair Hamilton?
Yes. Okay. Let's move on to the study session, item eight in the agenda. An overview and discussion regarding Santa Monica sign code from city planning staff.
So the, the bulk of our brief presentation will be actually given by Michelle Hugard. I'll just give an overview, and, you know, the, the reason this is on the agenda tonight is actually a couple of commissioners reached out and had questions, you know, just different ideas around the sign code. And, you know, it occurred to us that I don't, the, the commission, some of you are, have been here a long time, some of you are brand new. You know, it's probably a great time just to do a kind of sign code 101. So the purpose of this tonight is kind of just an overview primer on the sign code, you know, how it works, its limitations, and the like, and really just to take your questions. You know, it's meant to be high-level, not a super detailed discussion about any particular program or anything like that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle. I also want to mention, we have Stephanie Reich from our ARB team, who obviously implements, you know, a lot of the sign code, works with the board on reviewing signs and things like that. So happy to also answer your questions.
All right, thanks, Jing. Again, Deputy City Attorney, Michelle Hugard. I'm stepping in the shoes of Heidi today, and as I told Jing earlier today, I am the stand-in for the stand-ins. So this is going to be very high-level. So let's start. So the city can regulate signs through its land use controls. And before I get into that, there, there's no action before you here today. This is really just a high-level overview to answer your questions. And then staff is here to answer questions about actual implementation at the city level. I'm going to provide the legal underpinnings for why there are certain regulations and certain legal considerations that we have with respect to signs in general. So first of all, the city can regulate signs through its land use controls, and this can be done in a variety of ways. One way is something that's happened recently, and that's establishing districts in which creative signage is appropriate. And earlier this year in March and also in June, council gave some direction with respect to this. So in March, there was some direction given regarding animated and supergraphic signs on the promenade, so allowing more flexibility on the promenade for particular reasons of economic growth and sustainability of the promenade. And there's been also some discussions about the allowance of large-format digital billboards that have been prohibited in the city for quite some time. The city can also regulate signs in purposes of proprietary capacities. So wayfinding signs, we, we have those in the downtown area, also bus advertising. And this is a great way for the city to have a source of revenue. And we can also regulate, the city can regulate to avoid overproliferation and blight within the city. So although the city can regulate signs, such regulations are more limited than some of the other land use controls that the city may have under its general police power. And there's a good reason for that, because signs are protected by the First Amendment. And regulation of signs can be considered a prior restraint on speech. So because of that, if the sign is regulating content, so if it's a content-based, it's not content-neutral regulation, it has to pass strict scrutiny, which is the highest level of scrutiny. And if you have to read a sign to determine if a regulation applies, then that's a good indication that it could be a content-based as opposed to content-neutral regulation. So an example of content-based regulation would be if there were different regulations for, say, a hotel or a political sign than there are for others. And another issue that comes up with this in particular is the allowance of onsite versus off-site advertising. That's come up quite a bit in recent jurisprudence. So onsite advertising is, you know, advertising goods and services at a particular location. Off-site would be advertising goods or services that are at a completely different location. And there has been, as I said, recent jurisprudence in the last couple of years from the Supreme Court as to whether that onsite versus off-site is content-neutral or content-based, and what regulations apply to that. And the Supreme Court has said that it is not a content-based distinction. And I, I will say, this is very, very nuanced. So there is a lot of case laws to all of these different points that we probably won't be able to get in here today. But this is, again, just a very, very high-level overview. So the city's sign code is content-neutral. Oh, sorry, one second. The, yeah, the provisions of the city's sign code are, it's content-neutral, regulates time, place, manner in which the message is displayed. All the regulations are content-neutral, they must advance a substantial governmental into, interest, they must be narrowly tailored to that interest, and they must leave open alternative channels for the information to be communicated. Courts have held that aesthetics and traffic safety are substantial government interests that can be regulated and that would justify sign code regulations. And the specific provisions of the sign code are in chapter 961 of the municipal code. Again, it regulates the time, place, and manner, size of signs, potential illuminations allowed for signs, of temporary and permanent signs in the city. It exempts certain signs, non-commercial signs and special event signs. In the city, it, off-site advertising has been prohibited since about 1985, although there were some billboards that were grandfathered in, and there are discussions of potentially amending that in the future. It's also kind of important to note that the sign code lives outside of the zoning code. So any potential changes to the sign code would not require a resolution of recommendation from the Planning Commission to be made. Of course, if there are advisory statements that the PC would like to make to the city council, they can do so, but it's not going to require a stop at PC before it would go to city council. That being said, and Stephanie is here to provide some more intricacies of the things that you may see, to the extent that there are signs that have to be reviewed by the Architectural Review Board, or if it's a historic site that requires a certificate of appropriateness for signs, any appeals of those decisions would come to you all. Also, if there's any development agreements that maybe have implications involving signs, those would all come to you as well. And with that, that's my high-level overview. Staff is here to answer any specific questions regarding implementation. That's all I have.
Great, thank you so much. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay. We can move now to open discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Landris?
Yeah, I, I guess I have question. Would, this came to us when Hilton wanted to put a sign up on the building, and we couldn't say yes, because the code clearly forbade it. I'm, I appreciate the study session. What I'm trying to understand is where we are headed. I know this is on the minds of many, particularly because of the promenade, right? But I'm also well-aware that with the advent of mega-events, with, I mean, there's a whole politics of signage now, right, and sponsors and things like that, that there may be revenue opportunities for private property owners in the city, but also for the city itself. So I, I guess my questions are whether or not part of that conversation is driven by that, with some sensitivity to our own city's precarious financial position, but also whether there are distinctions in how the city, how signs are regulated on city-owned property versus signs being regulated on non-city-owned property, and the extent to which the city has the authority to regulate signs on properties owned by other public entities such as the school district or the college? Just so that we can understand.
So I'll, I'll address your, your question about like public and private property. I think to, to be clear, the sign code applies to everything, first, like foundationally, unless there's an exception. So one thing that is in there, and exemption to the sign code, you know, then this speaks then to, you know, the city's proprietary role versus its regulatory role, right? So if we have events, you know, that fall under our definition of what is a community event on public property, those kinds of events are exempt from the sign code. So that, that is an exemption that is in our sign code under, sorry, I'm just looking it up, 961-140, as signs, a special event sign, what's defined as a special event sign. And that is signs associated with, you know, an event approved through a community event permit or a temporary use permit. So in those instances, you could have signage, you know, that is regulated. And the reason for that is because it's regulated under the community permit guidelines, which is a whole nother set of things, yeah.
Just to be, just to be super clear, so I understand you. You could put up a sign saying Fourth of July Parade this Friday on our city-owned property at the Civic Center, but RAND could not.
Yeah, so there, and then this is, so then there's...
That's the distinction, right?
There's other regulations, you know, around, like, you know, like, someone couldn't just put up a banner, you know, on one of our light poles, for example, or string it across the street, you know, for any reason. You know, the, the sign code does regulate even that, you know, where the city, you know, has the authority to do that. You know, it needs to be, to advance a public purpose, a public event, something like that. You know, so you'll often see that, you know, where it's promoting, you know, a, a city event. I think the city's 150th, you know, the sesquicentennial, right, would be an example of that, or other city events. The, there's a city co-produced events or what have you, like, I'll just, like, Main Street Solstice, right? You know, you kind of see that banner come up. So that's kind of an example. So there's, I guess I see that with, like, there's many layers to, to the sign code, and it's, and it's not sort of just like one size fits all.
Yeah, and also in addition, there are temporary signs that are exempt for all properties.
Right, exactly, yeah. But again, it's not, it's, it's not, it has to be content-neutral, so...
Right.
Right, and the same, and so we regu, are, are, is the school district and the college and the, and the courts, are they... the, and the courts, are they exempt?
Yes.
School districts are, yeah, yeah, they're exempt.
They're exempt from any review for the city.
Okay. So that, so they can put up their digital billboards and they're fine?
Well, there are certain, there are certain schools that are within the jurisdiction of the city and the city's design review code, but the schools such as LAUSD or Santa Monica, right, Santa Monica and SMC, that are regulated by the state, we have no purview over them.
Okay, okay. And lastly, we, forgive me for miss, for not really fully noticing this, when I drive in Los Angeles frequently on the streetlights, you brought this up, we see, you know, coming to the Getty, coming to the LA County Museum of Art, such and such an exhibition, we do not permit that in Santa Monica, because it's private, those are private nonprofits, or we do for some non-content-based reason?
We enable, we do enable banners, but I believe they are, that has to be public.
So, so the sign code at 961-140C exempts pole banners or over-the-street banners that are authorized pursuant to another code section, so we do allow them in some situations.
Okay, thanks, I'm good for now.
Commissioner Jaco?
Thank you. I have some questions regarding how the approval of signs through development agreements and how that works. So is the intent, as you move forward with these changes, is the intent to establish some broad standards that would apply to all sites, or would the intent be to allow specific standards on specific sites to be approved through development agreements?
It's a little bit of both. And I think we're not talking specifically about any projects tonight, because they might come before you.
Right. Yeah, but in terms of the broad purpose, the direction that you've been given, that's what I wanted to understand, yeah.
I think we are doing some general studies to inform, to inform all of the development agreements, and then they are each a separate matter. We're trying to develop, we've been directed to develop a district, and so we're trying to have a broad policy framework while we're also looking at specific agreements.
Sorry, just to provide clarification, sorry, I thought you were talking about just a regular old DA, but it sounds like you're asking about council's recent study session on the digital billboard development agreements. So just to recap from that, from that meeting, council gave direction to form a special sign district for the Third Street Promenade in Santa Monica Place as the kind of, like, only geographic area where digital billboards could be considered through a development agreement process. So we work, we're working with the city attorney's office to bring back to council that sign, that special sign district ordinance, which would, you know, have to be, you know, in place, you know, before the development agreements, you know, for a billboard proposal could be authorized by the council.
And so is it possible for a development agreement approval of a sign on one site to be approved and not be approved on another site with similar locational considerations?
So separate...
I, I think, I kind of want to pause here, because I just, I want to make sure that we stay within the bounds of the agendized item, which is not specifically about those. Also, those development agreements will require a recommendation, you know, of this Planning Commission to the City Council, you know, we're very much working through the process of that, you know, at the moment, so I think, you know, if you have questions, we're happy to answer and kind of recap council's direction, you know, but I don't want to get into a substantive discussion about any one of those development agreements.
Yeah, and I can just chime in here, and that's, you know, we want to prevent the appearance of a prejudgment bias so that you all can participate in that discussion if a DA comes to you in the future.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Thanks, just one question about the content regulation. My understanding is that if it is sort of speech by the government, the government has more power to regulate it, like, they could reject a sign, you know, at City Hall or something like that from certain content. Does that, I guess, how far does that extend? Does that extend to digital billboards on public, or digital displays on public property, like at Palisades Park, things like that?
So the city's, the city's sign code is really content-neutral. I mean, in the past, there were more content-based regulations, and there was substantial renovat, not renovations, amendments done to the sign code to make it content-neutral, and so the way that the sign code reads now is that we really attempt to make all of the regulations time, place, manner, and not on the content of the speech. So there's a lot of potential hypothetical situations that are very nuanced, and happy to have some further discussion about that, but the evaluation on that would be very fact-specific, so.
Thank you. I want to say, thank you for a great presentation. I coincidentally had had a conversation with, with planning staff just about a week before Commissioner Landris brought this idea up about wanting to revisit that discussion that we had had regarding the Hilton, and wanted to better understand our, you know, what room we have within the regulation to allow for businesses similar to the Hilton to have more flexibility about their signage. I think, you know, that conversation that we had, I think we, I think we understood the applicant's request really well, I think it had a lot of merit, I think, had it not been for the regulation, I think, you know, I at least would have voted for it. And I think it's a, I mean, I brought it up because I think it's a conversation that we just need to have, I mean, particularly for businesses, and I want to also premise this by saying, it's not that we, Santa Monica does not allow signs, we do allow signs, but up to a certain height, and I think that was what the applicant in the, in the situation of the Hilton, they just wanted to allow for the sign that they were allowed at 20 feet to be higher up on the building, to allow for better wayfinding for their guests as they are crossing Fourth Street, or coming in from the freeway, the 10 freeway, and exiting. I will say that, you know, they wanted just better signage to help people find their business. And I, I thought, you know, they also had mentioned that they had put a lot of investment into that building, and they, I want to find a way, or, you know, curious about ways that we can see this also as like an economics revitalization concept where businesses who do make investments in our city, who do bring high-quality, you know, retail, are given some flexibility about signage. So that was the premise of just wanting to open this conversation a little bit further and revisit this. But I have a question for staff, and so, as I said before, we do, Santa Monica does allow signage, it's just at a certain height. And I'm thinking about, say, a business like, let's just say, a cross example, but like a standalone McDonald's, right? The business is a restaurant that is allowed signage because it is basically, it's, the building is the business. There is an identity of interest between the actual operation of that business and the ownership of that building. And my, my question would be, you know, in some ways, the hotel like Hilton is similar in a lot of respects, where the building is owned by a single business. They're not subleasing it, they're not selling that, that space at the top of the building for, you know, to, you know, as a, as an income generator. It is simply a sign that announces what business is in that building, and that's the only business in the building, so it's not like a typical high-rise, right, where you buy the rights to put the sign up. Is there, I'm asking, is there some flexibility that we could, we could put into the code that would allow a business, say, like, the RAND building, right, it's one building, it's owned by RAND, they're the only tenant, or a Hilton, or, not to be specific to hotels, but any business where there is a, an identity of interest between the ownership of the building and the operation of the business, it's all one, could we allow a waiver to allow those businesses to have a higher sign, to allow their, their sign to be higher up on the building than the current standard?
So if I could just talk a little bit about the flexibility that's in the code?
Yeah.
So the reason that the rooftop sign for the Hilton came to you is because they were asking for a sign adjustment, and that sign adjustment went to be reviewed by the Architectural Review Board, and staff analyzed that request against all the other rooftop signs that we have in the city, and analyzed that against the findings that needed to be made. So we analyzed the request and found that that request couldn't meet the findings, and I have the findings in front of me, we could, you know, put them on the screen. If we thought the findings were too, if, if the commission thought, wanted to have a discussion about the findings, that the findings are too inflexible to allow the kind of flexibility that might be necessary, we, you know, the, the Planning Commission or the council could modify the findings, for example. I just wanted to clarify that there is flexibility in the code, and there could be a possibility to make the findings for a difference, a different sign that's not within the code, and we have that ability to do that.
Okay. But this, that particular project did not qualify for this?
Well, staff felt that it didn't, we couldn't make the findings, the ARB agreed with us, and the applicant applied for, applied for that adjustment with a case to make the findings.
I think I just want to pause again, that we're not getting into talking about, obviously, a decision that's been made already, I appreciate using it as an example, but I think, you know, to answer your question about, you know, any way to think about flexibility, I think your example there of, like, using, you know, a situation where you have a single owner associated like that, this, you know, that, that's kind of like a use-based, you know, restriction, you know, I don't think that that would be content-neutral, you know, a time, place, manner restriction. I'll throw an example out there, you know, you could, for example, maybe think about, you know, within some distance of the freeway as an example, right, as something that is content-neutral, you know, and as a geographic, you know, restriction, just, just as, as an idea, this is not talking about any one single situation, but that, that's an example of, of, you know, a way to think about flexibility. I'll just speak kind of generally, you know, because I think this was brought up in the context of just the city's general economic recovery approach, you know, we, we are definitely looking at all kinds of different ways to provide flexibility, but as, as you can see, sign codes are really tricky, you know, and there is a, like, tremendous amount of judicial precedent, case law that informs all of it, and I would say just about every question I've ever asked the city attorney's office about signs is tremendously fact-specific and peppered with, like, First Amendment craziness, you know?
To give the attorney answer, it really depends.
Right.
It really depends on the particular situation, so...
Right, very much so, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't mean to keep referring back to the Hilton, because I don't want to revisit that, but it just happens to be the example. I think we can just as easily turn to the RAND building, you know, in, in talk, or, or any building...
Absolutely, yeah.
...that's owned by a single occupant for a single business.
And I think, like, regulating in that way would probably be, it sounds like it would be troublesome or potentially not allowed. I think what we're trying to, maybe the point here really is that, you know, if you think about allowing it for one, one, whatever the situation may be, you know, that it may be, you may have to require it or allow it for everybody, you know, unless you can think of a distinction, you know, that would make it able, you know, to be restrictive in that way, so that's why, you know, geography, like, is an example, you know, of, of that, but it's very much like, it is fact-specific, you know, we would have to, depending on whatever the proposal is, it would have to be analyzed on whether the facts were there to support that regulation.
Mm-hmm.
Is that fair? Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
Commissioner Landris?
Those findings, they're generic findings, right? So can, are we allowed to look at those?
I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, 961-130.
Which one is it?
Sign adjustment.
Okay. Look. There it is.
There, there you go. Oh, you got it.
Oh, they both worked.
Yay. Okay. Go back, you just had it, 1130.
130, yeah.
Sign adjustment.
Yes.
Practical difficulties are unnecessary hardships, not a special privilege, wait, and, oh, you're making it bigger, yeah, keep going, almost there, okay. And then incompatibility, okay, so, okay, I think the, so to keep this generic, it is hard to say that not putting up, I mean, I can think of things where it's an unnecessary hardship, but the conversation we're having, we're not talking about practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships, we're talking about enhancements and, in the, in the eyes of the applicant, we're talking about enhancements, revenue generators, things like that. So my observation, I don't know where you are, Chair Hamilton, but, you know, my observation would be like, to take a look at one and see, wait, go back, take a look at one, which is to evaluate the practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships, and whether or not that's too strict a standard. The question of special privileges, I think we need to keep because we want to have, we have a vested interest in some kind of consistency across the city, I mean, we just had a whole conversation about alcohol permits and gas stations and why we can't, you know, think about them differently. And then the question of incompatibility, yeah, that's, I'm just going to say, objective design standards, and, and back slowly toward the door. And what's for? Sorry. The purposes of the chapter, okay. So I, I think I'm leaning on one and raising that question about practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships, and I would raise the question, particularly in the current economic environment, as to whether denying the opportunity is a very challenging one, but I would say, if I'm a business owner trying to stay in my location and I'm looking to make money, to make my rent and my payroll almost by any means necessary, and I think, oh, I can rent, I can do digital advertising, or I could do something like that, I think we have to do some really careful analysis to make sure that, A, the city has the right to regulate things so that we're not covered in advertisements, and B, that we are not overly preventing businesses from leveraging their properties to make money and stay in business. I'll stop there. And I would raise the question, particularly in the current economic environment, as to whether denying the opportunity is a very challenging one. But I would say, if I'm a business owner trying to stay in my location and I'm looking to make money, to make my rent and my payroll almost by any means necessary, and I think, oh, I can rent, I can do digital advertising, or I could do something like that. I think we have to do some really careful analysis to make sure that, A, the city has the right to regulate things so that we're not covered in advertisements, and B, that we are not overly preventing businesses from leveraging their properties to make money. And stay in business. I'll stop there.
Could you scroll down briefly to number four?
So it, would it be possible to? I, I'm trying to find a, a content neutral standard that would allow certain businesses to have a sign higher up on their building than, than what's currently allowed. And what, what we're hearing is that we could look at it based on the geography and the location of the business. And then you said that there was also a, a standard where if there was a certain like distinction or difference with the business, that would not apply to a particular, particular building or a particular business, but could be broadly applied. That that's also an acceptable avenue of discussion and to still stay within First Amendment prohibitions?
Yeah, I mean, I think you, if, if I understand, I mean, I, I think overall what you're looking for is just like flex, flexibility. Not, and, and particularly there, there's an interest in upper level signs. I just kind of want to clarify kind of like.
Just upper level.
Desired outcome.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, and I, I, I think we just, yeah. I think it's hard for us to kind of give like direct feedback on, you know, like, oh, would this work, would this work?
Understood.
Sort of, like, sort of on the fly, just because, you know, the complexities of how, how sign codes are, are constructed. You know, so I think that if, you know, just kind of, I, I'm, I'm hearing some interest in it, you know, this is, this is a study session, so.
Yeah.
You're not taking action, but the commission could certainly, you know, give, give direction, you know, express an interest in sort of like further exploration, you know, of, of looking at upper level signage. Ultimately, it's the city council that sets, you know, policy and, and the like, you know, so it could be kind of part of that communication, you know, we don't have, we, we don't have like wholesale changes to the sign code going to the council at the moment.
Right.
You know, it's sort of kind of an ongoing piece of it. You know, but it's, it's something I think if you express that interest, you know, it's something we could take in to consideration in this kind of overall look of things. And, you know, if there's council interest in doing something like that, provided we could think about and, you know, see, see options and avenues, you know, for looking at upper level signage.
Okay. That would be, I think, helpful.
Yeah, and just so that the commission is aware, we have provided that flexibility already on the promenade. And so because that has a clear geographical boundary.
Right.
Where, that we can easily do.
Okay. Yeah, and I, you know, another, another distinction too is the sign itself would not be, in the way I would see it, would not be a revenue source or generator for the building. It would simply be the business displaying its sign as to who it is, but it's not a, it's a revenue neutral sign. Yeah. Yes, Commissioner Landris.
I'm not sure that's entirely true, because if you have a building that is owned by company one and leased by company two, and the company two is acquiring the right to put up a self-identifying sign, it's still revenue to the owner. If the owner is charging rent for the sign. So I just, right, the owner's interest in permitting or denying a sign might be revenue-related relative to the lessee that wants to put up the sign.
Great. I, I mean, I guess if it, if it helps drive, if it helps people find your building easier and they're better able to, you know, use your, use your business, I guess that's one. I guess that's the way I would see it. But it wouldn't be like a downtown high-rise that sells the signage rights to any business that wants to pay and advertise.
That's off-premise, right? So we can make the distinction between on-premise and off-premise. But I think there are revenue cases for on-premise signage relative to a landowner and/or property owner. I mean, it's actually.
Yeah, I think you're right, John, but I think that, I think, but, well, the distinction is off-site.
Yeah, exactly.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing I just wanted to throw out there was if I'm looking at the prohibited sign, and I'm not sure when this was last up, well, actually, 2020. We do not particularly do a great job of, and I don't think this content, I think this is content neutral, of like light intensity. And so we might want to consider strengthening prohibitions on light intensity or flashing lights. Even on the promenade, I want to, you know, we should, do we now have to put up warnings for people who are, who have epilepsy? Are we going to start seeing digital signage that could potentially cause somebody to have a seizure? I don't know. I'd like, that's above my pay grade. But to your point about upper level signage, and we do have some limits on upper level signs or roof signs, these are A, nine and 10 of nine sixty one one eighty. I would be, I, I'm thinking about it in terms of like, where could a sign be located on a large, on a taller building, maybe not a larger building. I'm not sure I agree with you about a building the size of the Rand building. I'm much more interested in the buildings that are much, much taller, including, you know, Hilton and higher as our examples. Where there is no way that that sign could distract a driver or a cyclist or, you know, right? So could we be more permissive on upper level signs whose intensity is sufficient to be legible? But not, not any ever at a level where, you know, you, you could be caught off guard by it.
I think the request was for a backlit sign.
Yeah.
Which I think is a tasteful and good example of the kind of thing we would want to allow if we could.
Yeah, yeah. And our ban on animation there would be, would be sufficient to avoid a kind of Vegas-y.
Yeah.
Come here.
Definitely trying to thread the needle there, yeah. Okay. Well, is there any other discussion amongst the commission regarding this? Okay. What do you want, what, what should next steps be in terms of this conversation?
I mean, the, the, you know, this is a study session, you don't have to take any action.
Yeah, no.
You know, at, at all. I think, you know, we've certainly heard your questions. I, I think as a commission, you know, you, like I said, you don't have to take any action. If you feel like you would like to make a motion to give some, you know, general direction, express an interest, write a letter to the council. I mean, there's sort of many different things for you, but it's not, yeah, it, it, it would need to be agendized, you know, in order to do that sort of thing. So you're not, you're not really taking any action.
Okay.
Can I ask a sense of the commission question? I just, we don't even have to vote, but I think it would be helpful because some of us were there at the prior hearing of the unnamed applicant about whom we are not thinking right now. Are we as a body broadly interested in the kinds of adjustments that Chair Hamilton has alluded to? I mean, I think it would be helpful for staff to know if we're kind of open to that conversation or whether we'd really just rather leave things the way they are. And that, not with more specificity, but it sounds like it would be helpful for you to know and for council to know that we think there's something to work on here and we'd love to know your thinking, or we really think that we're fine.
I would describe myself as open but cautious.
I think the world is changing and we always have to be open to reevaluating.
Yeah, I'm, I'm there too.
Low priority in my life is signage. Put myself in peers camp.
In?
In peers camp.
In peers camp, okay, okay. All right, well. It's been a good conversation. I think staff, you've heard, you've heard our feedback and, and we'll try to find an appropriate time, if any, to continue this conversation. Okay. We have no continued items, no staff administrative items. We can move on to item eleven, public, eleven A, recommendation from, to the city council, that the council amend the text of the city's zoning ordinance to promote economic recovery and increase land use flexibility in the city's downtown area. And.
Chair?
Yes.
With, with, no doubt, just like Jesse, Steve prepared a deeply detailed and meaningful presentation that would have changed our lives forever. Nevertheless, I move to waive it.
I second.
All those in favor of waiving the staff report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any public comment on this item?
I have questions.
Oh, okay, yes, sir, sorry.
Thank you. I, I just have some questions on, I guess, elements of the interim zoning ordinance that were discussed in the resolution to put this on the agenda, but not here before us today. So what? Have you evaluated the results of the by right changes that are in the IZO on the promenade and surrounding area?
Yeah, so I think those changes to land use, that's kind of what we're currently doing at the moment. So I think a lot of, our experience with a lot of the IZOs that have come out is give it a little bit of time so the public can engage. And then also through different examples, we can then start to study and see what's working and what's not working. So in terms of the recent by right changes that we made back in October 2024, it's a little bit early still, but we're still seeing some, you know, positive moves in that direction. But so the plan is for, since we've made so many changes to the land use table in the downtown area, instead of kind of a piecemeal moving forward, we're looking at it more of a holistic and comprehensive approach to make sure that all of our land uses kind of makes sense. It gives us some time to self-correct things that may kind of come up based on kind of the situation of the business. But it also allows us to kind of jump right back in to make enhancements as we're kind of getting feedback from the public. So that's kind of what our team is kind of going to be doing ongoing. And we realize a lot of these IZOs are something that we're continuously evaluating because we're, we're, we're in that mode right now of economic recovery as we know.
Do you have a sense of if the fact that it's in an IZO as opposed to the permanent zoning ordinance affects ability to get a loan, other ability, willingness of a business to, you know, start up i- if it's allowed in an IZO but not in the permanent zoning ordinance?
No, you know, in terms of, we have this open to 2028. By no means I don't think that we're intending to wait that long, but there isn't, whether or not it's an IZO form, if it's permanently adopted, it affects everybody the same. So they, everyone's getting the same availability. But yeah, we, we don't know, I don't think there's any connection between whether or not it's interim or not. And, you know, working with our economic development team, like, we envision that these are changes that are either really just going to get more flexible, if anything. So as we're meeting with new businesses, we're letting them know this is kind of the direction that Santa Monica is going.
I would also make two, two points on that. I think one is that we're, you know, as we make these changes, one of the things we hear from a business community is like, it's just hard to find information. And we're trying not to put it in like three or four different places. So to a property owner broker, to be able to be like, look, you know, whether it's in, like, look either in this, you know, this permanent code or the IZO, like, we're trying to keep the regulations all in the same place, number one. But I think the practical effect of it is, you know, if a use starts up under an IZO, it is vested. It's not like, you know, because it expires, like, okay, like, you know, it now terminates. That's not the way land use works. If you happen to get in, you know, under that IZO umbrella, it continues. You know, we have every intent to, so even if it's like codified later, it, it makes no difference, you know, practically speaking. So, you know, we're not seeing, believe me, if, if there was concern in financing or uncertainty, we would hear about it immediately, you know. But we've had nothing but overwhelmingly positive feedback from property owners and brokers who are liking the, you know, are, are very responsive, you know, to, to their issues, their ability, our ability to move quickly to address their leasing issues, their ability to turn it around and market it is huge, you know, for them. And I think the ability to know that they have an IZO and that we're able to continue to tweak, you know, that as things arise, particularly around the downtown and the promenade area. You know, we, we're just not hearing kind of, you know, concern around like, you know, the fact that it's either in permanent or, or IZO. But for actually ease of looking at where things are, you know, we're trying to keep, keep things kind of together.
And then one more question. On, let's see, March 20th, there was an executive order, the Palisades Fire Executive Order, that suspended enforcement of a, a number of things, but limits on the gross revenues per year of alcohol sales, restrictions on the number of television screens and screen size, prohibitions on pool tables, video games, amusements, bowling darts, and other similar activities. I mean, the fact that these are prohibited, I'll save it for comments. Have, have you evaluated the effect of that executive order on businesses in the district?
Yeah, I think we're starting to get feedback from that. That was intended to kind of be just in time for the March Madness tournament. So it was a great time, but, you know, these are standards that used to make sense in the city. But nowadays, it, we're really trying to relax these as much as possible. So from the EO standpoint, those suspensions in particular, we're going to kind of take a look at those and reevaluate those to see what's the best approach of trying to keep those moving forward.
Do you have a timeline?
Whether or not, well, we have the emergency order for another two months, but I imagine we'll probably be back.
I, I mean, just so you understand kind of the, how the emergency order works, it's not obviously meant to be forever.
Yeah.
The council has to ratify, you know, the proclamation of the emergency every 60 days. So they last did that at their June 24th, June 10th, I think it was. And then so they're due to do it again, you know, in August, provided that the conditions of emergency still exist. What we are actually seeing now is displaced Palisades businesses. So the schools initially, you know, very quickly contacted us. What we're seeing now is businesses who were, you know, in the Palisades, you know, and now are ready to actually reopen again and relocate to Santa Monica. So it started a, a new wave of questions around a mile out here. What can you do to assist? You know, as Roxanne mentioned, we're holding the, the small, you know, the Business Resource Fair for Palisades businesses on July 9th. So it, it has kind of established those continuing conditions for the council to continue the emergency. And, you know, because the questions we're receiving are kind of, they're, they're new. You know, it's like, oh, okay, like, we didn't think about that, you know, as they look for different spaces throughout the city. And we look to match, you know, business with tenant space, you know, what are the barriers? Having the tool of the EO in place allows us to really make that change very quickly and take effect immediately. The city manager has, as the Director of Emergency Services, does have that authority. And then the council ratifies that, you know, every, every 60 days. So when you think about a timeline, you know, we've been, we, we definitely, that was council's direction and it's baked into the emergency order around the relief for schools, displace small businesses, and also around like suspensions, around leasing regulations and the like. You know, it's, it, it is in the order for staff to explore ways to evolve that into other mechanisms. So that will be coming forward, you know, when it looks to us like the emergency looks like it's kind of like winding down. You know, I think, you know, we're, we're looking at that. I think finding opportunities to do that, you know, when it makes sense. I would imagine probably somewhere around, you know, the end of summer, fall would be an ideal time, you know, for us to kind of package that together, you know, and bring it forward to the council for, for codification.
Of this year.
Yeah, for this year.
Thank you.
Commissioner Landris. I really don't have anything to ask except. I mean, in honor of the 150th anniversary, birthday of the city of Santa Monica, could we please get rid of the ban on dancing citywide? Just, please, please. I mean, I, I.
I thought you were going to say web crawls.
No, I mean, like, I'm fine, yeah, I'm happy to get rid of everything else, but we know, I just, we know the origins of that ban. They're not okay. We learned this from Commissioner Fratton. Commissioner Fresco a few years ago, thanks to her, I think the city made a lot of progress, but. The ban on dancing was racist, it was designed to harm African-American residents of the city of Santa Monica. So I'm happy to see them go. But I would like to see them, I mean, I would like to see them go permanently citywide, I just wanted to say that, so I will vote for this, but like, including but not limited to dancing, like, it's just still there.
It was a different time.
All right, any other questions of staff? Do we have any public comment? No public comment? Okay, we're open to commission discussion. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll just echo what Sean said, I I think that the things in the the March Madness order, for for one, you know, it it's it's connection to the Palisades Fire seems stretched to me, I will also say that, you know, the the IZO zoning distinction may not be that big, but an emergency order is different than the zoning ordinance, and to invest in a big TV, a pool table, it's not a huge investment, but you might not do it if 90 days from now, you're going to have to throw it out. So I'm pleased to hear that this is going to come soon, so I I I don't think we need to do an amendment at this time, but. Yeah, I I just want to see those kind of restrictions, which, you know, I think are ridiculous, especially at a time when people need third spaces to, you know, that we prohibit pub crawls seems ridiculous to me, but I'll I'll leave it at that, I think the changes proposed are are great, and I'm happy to vote for them.
Okay.
I just have.
Oh, yes, sir.
Now I've been triggered by Sean, and I have to give a little historical perspective on these things, when I said earlier that times have really changed, and, you know, that I'm open to reviewing things because times always change, and, you know, when I think about the history of Santa Monica, and, you know, in the old days, it was the Wild West, and we were known as a saloon town, and then we became one of the early prohibition towns to make up for it, and then we realized that was silly, and we went back the other way, and I think when we implemented a lot of these rules, we were trying to like really clean up our image and become fancy pants Santa Monica, and fancy pants Santa Monica is not working for us anymore, and so we're just evolving, and we just need to be self-aware and continue to meet the needs of our community.
I wholeheartedly agree with you about the fancy pants of Santa Monica, it needs to get, we need to, we need to loosen up a little bit, yeah, we need to move on, okay. Are we ready to have a vote on this item?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Commissioner Chaco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes to dancing and TVs.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
And Chair Hamilton?
Yes. Okay, well. Without any, are there any planning, Commissioner, discussion items? I don't think so, so I think we're ready to adjourn our meeting at seven thirty two.
Shall we do so in honor of the 150, the upcoming 150th anniversary of the of the map recording of the city of Santa Monica on July 10th, 1875?
And not to like make it all about me, but July 10th is also my birthday.
And in honor of Commissioner Fresco's birthday.
You're like Yankee Doodle Dandy.
I am.
You are Santa Monica's very own Yankee Doodle Dandy.
I think I am.